Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Adriani sends her regrets. She cannot be here tonight, so I will be sitting in for her. Just a few official things first. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home -- excuse me, Home News Tribune, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision, Channel 118, and Verizon Files, Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, April 29, 2014. The Board will take formal action on agenda items. Mr. Mara?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recordings to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Borsili. De Prima.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Hopman.
Here.
Mungan.
Here.
Singh.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Adriani. Quorm exists.
If we could all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of which stands our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment, please. Have a moment of silence in memoriam. Move the Board acknowledged the passing of Jenny Rosenbaum, retired secretary, and express its deepest sympathy to her family and friends. Thank you. Please be seated. Do I have a volunteer to read the Code of Ethics this month? I think it was supposed to be me, so we're going this way. Rich, would you like to? Read the Code of Ethics, please.
Sure. Every Board member will confine his or her Board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
Thank you. To those who don't know, this is -- we've added this, I think it was last month. It's just a reminder to everybody and to ourselves why we're all here. Mr. Mara has some administrative changes?
Okay, and all the Board members, on their agendas, they reflect all the administrative corrections and changes. Anything that was different from the agenda meeting has been either highlighted or emboldened. And copies of the administrative corrections are out there for the public. Thank you, Mr. Mara.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. Mr. Mara, roll call.
Motion.
I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No more.
Mr. Singh?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Weber and Mr. Singh. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Borsili.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mungan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, first thing we have is a special presentation. Students from Grissom School and Mr. John Tichio recognize Ms. Donna Kibler. Mr. Tichio, please.
My name is John Tichio. Along with the paraprofessionals, Mrs. Zonia Stetson and Mrs. Kimberly Douglas, I teach the Full Day Kindergarten Pilot Program at Grissom School. We've heard a lot about full-day kindergarten, from Board members and administrators, from teachers and parents, and from concerned citizens, but tonight, we have from the most important group, our students.
We love to thank Mr. Sididino and the Board of Education for our speaking tonight. Full-day kindergarten has been a lot of fun. We welcome you to our trip. We like green books and learning new rules. We like to paddle with blocks and Legos.
We like to explore the sand table.
We like to learn about money and the presents, too.
We like to tune songs with the piano.
We like to graffit and run and play. None of these fun times would be possible without the help of Ms. Kibler.
We came here tonight to give Ms. Kibler two gifts.
The first gift is a firbert tree. It reminds Kibler how much she's helped the seeds of all the birds grow.
Go with Mrs. Stetson. Wait one second. One second. Just wait one second. Just stand there and smile big. Clap. It's gonna be clap. Keep up. She's so happy. She's crying. Don't talk. Not yet. Not yet. Not yet. Okay. You're ready. Go.
The second gift is called a song called "Oh Till Dry."
Thank you so much, boys and girls. That was wonderful. This is what it's all about, folks. That was wonderful. I think Ms. Kibler has her words.
Good evening. I'd really like to thank Mr. Tichio, Dr. Orico, and the kindergarten children from Grissom School. This was a wonderful honor to be celebrated by these children, but what is more importantly is that we celebrate these children because they have embraced full-day kindergarten so wholeheartedly. We need to celebrate their accomplishments because they have embraced full-day kindergarten as their arena for learning, their learning to learn, and they've done a spectacular job. Look what they've accomplished. A beautiful song played on their first instrument that they've ever really played. So, parents, hug your children every day, celebrate their accomplishments, and please know that the administration and the Board of Education, you know, has done this for your children, put in full-day kindergarten. They have fulfilled the vision of a man who set this on the road to reality many, many years ago, Mr. Patrick Torrey, the former superintendent of schools in Old Bridge, and this was Mr. Torrey's vision way back in the '80s, that we have full-day kindergarten. And I'm happy to say that long after his passing, it has come to fruition. But I thank the residents, the children, and the Board and the administration for all your support and cooperation, and I celebrate these children because they're just so beautiful. Thank you.
Next thing is recognition. I'd like to invite Mr. Sididino to the podium to proceed with the recognition.
It's a tough act to follow, but I'm hoping that I can get a cookie after this as well. I received an email about a month ago alerting me about a student at Memorial School, and that student's name is Michael Moraglia, and I was so impressed by this email and its information that I had to go visit him at his school. Is Michael here now? Come on up. You can stand right here. All right. So, if you don't know Michael, Michael is a phenomenal student at Memorial School, but he's also an athlete. Michael, what do you play?
Football.
He plays football. What position do you play?
Tight end.
Tight end, and he's quite a football player, but he's not here today to be honored for his prowess on the gridiron. He's here because Michael was selected out of 100 -- one of 35 students in the nation out of 50,000 applicants to be selected as a Pop Warner All-American student for the -- his high GPA. So, he's putting it together in the classroom and also on the field. There were students from the region. He was the only student selected from our region, which includes New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and Maryland. So, out of 50,000 applicants, he's one of 35 in the nation, and we're very proud of that accomplishment. Thank you, Michael. Go over to the center stage and take a picture.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask Dujukabiki, Assistant Principal at Jonas Salk School, to join me at the podium. Move the Board to commend the following Jonas Salk Middle School students who are crowned Tri-County Champion of the Great Middlesex County Wrestling League.
We call the boys up. Go up, boys. We got it. Good evening. The Jonas Salk family is very proud of these remarkable wrestlers who went above and beyond to receive the honor of being crowned GMC Champions. And although we're here tonight to recognize these athletes, I would be remiss if I did not recognize our two outstanding coaches, Mr. Robert Quinn, who is unable to be here this evening, and Mr. Paul Poitras, who joined me at the podium, for all of their efforts and dedication to the sport, because a team is only as strong as their leaders. And Mr. Paul Poitras would like to now share some words on each of the athletes.
Thank you. This year, the Jonas Salk Middle School wrestling team had another successful season. We finished with 12 wins and two losses. We won the GMC League Conference for the third straight year, and we're crowned Division Champs again. This year, we had six GMC Champions. The first one wrestled 105 pounds for us. He was a GMC Champ, very tough wrestler, Sonny Fauci. Next was a heavyweight. He was an eighth grader, first-year wrestler, was a GMC Champion. He was a first-year wrestler, and like I said, it's a very hard sport to pick up, being a first-year wrestler. He had a huge win to lock our division up, Jonathan Lopez. Next, this boy's a seventh grader. This is second-year wrestling. He wrestled 126 pounds for us. He was a GMC Champ, a Middlesex County Champ, and finished second in the Tri-County Championships. Lost a very tough match, Justin Vazales. This next boy wrestled 170 pounds for us. He finishes as a two-time GMC Champion, a two-time Middlesex County Champion, and finished second in the Tri-Counties. Good luck in high school, Tyler Hugnay. This next wrestler wrestled 185 pounds for us. Finished the season undefeated. He's a two-time GMC Champion. He's a Middlesex County Champion and won the Tri-County Championship this year, Bartek Okay, this next boy wrestled 90 pounds for us. He finished his Jonas Salk wrestling career with 50 wins and four losses. He was a Salk MVP this year. He's a three-time GMC Champion, a three-time Middlesex County Champion, and this year won the Tri-County Championships, Michael Body.
The next item on the recognition comes from Carl Sandberg Middle School. If I can have Principal Joseph Maranzoli, please go to the podium. Special thanks to the following donors: Disney, Carol Worley, Betty Coling, Kristen and Joseph Stahl, Joyce Pearl, Deborah Carbone, and Carl Hush for funding the Donors' Choice Project Bring the Greenhouse to Life, submitted by Susan Stahl for $711. Funding was used to purchase a heater, hose hanger, 1,000 Jiffy pellets, 10 planting trays, and one red cedar planter for the Carl Sandberg Middle School greenhouse restoration. Mr. Maranzoli. Thank you, Mr. Sididino. Just to give everyone a little bit of a background, Carl Sandberg Middle School has a wonderful facility, and in that facility, there is a greenhouse. And the greenhouse, for a long time, had been a little bit used and dilapidated, so our last year's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Stahl, or Ms. Stahl, wanted to work on that greenhouse as a memorial to Mrs. Cornishewitz, who was our speech teacher who had passed. And through her efforts, she put together several different fundraising opportunities. One was through the Donors' Choose Project, which is an online way of trying to get donors, and she was able to successfully have all of these donors donate to make a beautiful, very, very functional, and wonderful greenhouse that is now a place of peace and remembrance. So, to her and every donor who helped with that cause, we wanted to say thank you. Okay, one more recognition, everyone. If you don't know, I am the chairman of the Food Service Committee, and I'd like to call Ms. Michelle Feliciano up to the podium. She's our Director of Food Services. Recently, we -- we recently had a Future Chefs Competition, and I think Michelle is just going to say a few words about it and bring our Future Chefs up. These are the names, if you need them.
Let me read the names?
I kind of coax Michelle to do this.
This was last minute, so I'm just flying off the cuff here. Real quick, what our Future Chefs Competition is, this actually starts back in December. I send out blank recipe cards for all the elementary schools to the fourth and fifth grade students. They in turn submit a recipe. This year, it was for a healthy sandwich. One winner was chosen from each elementary school to compete. They competed on Saturday, March 22. They were placed on a team with one of my employees and a high school culinary student. So, the high school culinary student and one of my employees helped the student create their recipe that day. They made 75 to 100 tasting portions. We had judges, so we had 11 teams, and we chose a winner from that day. Our winner is here, Madison Pastor from Cooper Elementary School.
You're going to do the statistical test. Come on up, Madison.
In addition, not only did Madison win on that day, Sidexo actually does this event all across the country. We had over 286 school districts nationwide. So, once the winners are chosen for all those school districts, the regional finalists are chosen. So, Madison was also chosen as a top 35 in the country. So, today, I actually went to her school, and we presented her with a Kindle Fire and $100 Amazon gift card to become a regional. And just a quick note, I mean, I -- this is a long -- probably, I worked on this all year, but I could not have done this without the help of my employees. Everyone pitches in that day. It's all volunteer. You know, they come in real early in the morning, and they work till late in the afternoon. Same thing with the high school culinary students. They help us as well, so just wanted to say a big thanks to them. I'm not sure who is here, so I'm going to read. Do you want me to read the names?
Yeah.
I'm going to read the names. If you are here, come on up. I'll start with the student, the elementary school students first. Cameron Gray from McDivitt. Matthew Brennan from Carpenter. Aaron Picard from Shira. Adam Iraqi from Southwood. Maeco Frisco from Voorhees. Julia Najron from Cheesequake. Xena Zafar from Madison Park. Emily Labor from Memorial. Emily was actually a winner last year. Ben Strew from Shepherd and Bradford Wallace from Miller. And I know the Sidexo employees that are here, Tina Antonelli, Ann Traverso, and Sharon Demann, and our chef manager, Judy. Okay, I just wanted to thank the high school culinary students also who participated. Alexandra Dennis, Gloria Winder, Dominique Bianco, Katie Yip, Dale Jesus, Megan Grassa, John McCarthy, Caitlin Nemeth, Mark Martinez, Nancy Calamanis, and Tony Dominici. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Michelle, and all the students involved. When I was in fifth grade, I really didn't care about healthy foods. I commend you guys. Great job, everybody. Okay, we're going to move on with recognition, so everyone knows after we complete recognition, we'll have a little break for everyone to leave, if you don't want to leave in the middle of recognition, so all of our students have an audience. That would be greatly appreciated. If I could have Ms. Fazio come to the podium. Move the Board of Education to recognize Nathaniel Feldman, Old Bridge High School Senior, for earning his rank of Eagle Scout with the St. Ambrose Troop 129.
Good evening. I have the pleasure tonight to honor Nathaniel Feldman, who is one of our outstanding Old Bridge children. Nathaniel's Eagle Scout has been an outstanding talent for our community. In June of 2013, Nathaniel completed his Eagle Scout project by installing over 200 feet of split-rail fencing along the field behind St. Ambrose Church and School. This installation provided not only beautification to the area, but protection for the children who used the playground and the fields. Nathaniel also built and installed two benches for the spectators to sit and watch the field events. Let me tell you a little bit something about Nathaniel. Academically, he currently holds a 5.2 GPA. He's ranked 11 out of 739. He is a member of the National Honor Society, the Math Honor Society, the Science Honor Society, History Honor Society, TRAM Honor Society, and reminded me today to include the French Honor Society, right, Nathaniel? His accomplishments do not end with his impressive academic older brother that you have with Tans Carl Sandberg Middle School.
Good evening, parents, students, Board of Education members, Mr. Sididino, Mrs. Kibler, Dr. Hooker, and the Oldbridge community. My name is Laurie Coletti, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to recognize an outstanding student at McDivitt School, Ms. Cameron Gray. Cameron is a member of the McDivitt School Safety Patrol and was recently recognized as one of 12 AAA Outstanding School Safety Patrolers at a luncheon in Bordentown, New Jersey. She was accompanied by her parents, Superintendent Mr. Sididino, Derozza Frank Cuchara, and her classroom teacher, Ms. Donovan. As McDivitt's principal, I am very aware of the treasure that is Cameron. She is wonderful to work with and totally trustworthy. Cameron is refreshing and delightful. We are lucky to have her to help with kindergarten arrival and dismissal. Cameron is academically strong, she's on honor roll, and participates in the challenge program. Cameron is involved with our instrumental music program, playing percussion in the 5th grade band. Cameron has an impressive resume of civic responsibility. She is an active member of the McDivitt Kiwanis Kids Club, the treasurer of McDivitt Student Council, McDivitt's Dare Ambassador to the Oldbridge Municipal Alliance, a peer mediator, and is McDivitt's finalist in the Oldbridge Future Chefs Competition. Cameron participates in all school activities, intramurals, and out-of-school service learning events such as park cleanups, senior citizen bingo, YMCA fundraiser, cancer run for the kids, and the food bank support. Cameron is an amazing 5th grader who continues to sparkle while her heart shines. It is a pleasure to recognize Cameron for her outstanding Safety Patrol efforts. Congratulations. This, however, this is signed by the Board of Education and the superintendent. Why don't you go over there and let Ms. Lucci take your picture?
I was telling Ms. Coletti when we met the other day that in Oldbridge, we don't bestow upon the Safety Patrolers a rank. So, some of the students who were there that day, and there was only about 15 from the entire state being honored, were called up as lieutenant, captain of the Safety Patrol. And I leaned over to Cameron, and I said, "Well, what is your rank in the Safety Patrol?" And she said, "In Oldbridge, we don't have ranks." So, I took a spoon and I tapped her on each shoulder. Cameron, why don't you tell everybody what your new rank is on the Safety Patrol? Chief. She, Cameron is the chief of our Safety Patrol. Thank you, Captain.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Can I have a motion to move recognition?
Mangan will move.
And a second, please?
Dunne will second recognition.
Mr. Mara?
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes, congratulations to all.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sorkowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
I don't see our student representative, Chris Simone, anywhere.
I will tell you why you don't see Chris Simone.
Okay.
Because Christopher Simone, I'm just trying to get the location, Chris is in the GMCs right now for the relays for track and field in South Brunswick, and he's competing representing the school district, and that is why he could not be here. But he asked me to pass along some tidbits of information about some of the activities going on at Oldbridge High School and in the community. He's very proud to report that Oldbridge High School took in 80 pints of blood in their recent blood drive on April 22nd. I'm going to tie this into my superintendent's report. And he wanted to let everyone know, as I want to let everyone know, on May 1st, we'll be having a lacrosse game. Oldbridge High School Lacrosse will be competing against Scotch Plains Fanwood Raiders at 7:00 PM at Lombardi Field. And all proceeds, including the sales of these excellent t-shirts, will go to assist Stephen Bartlett, a sophomore at Oldbridge High School, who is battling stage IV Hodgkin lymphoma, and I'm very proud of the entire community, how they're rallying together to support him at this time, and him and his family. So, it would be great to have as many people there as possible. I do know that May 1st is also the Arts Festival, and that was scheduled prior to this, but there's a special reason why we chose this game against Scotch Plains Fanwood. The goalie from that team is also a cancer survivor who just came back this season in his fight for cancer, so we thought it'd be a great inspiration for Stephen to have these two teams play. And that will be rain or shine, that game. May 1st at 6:00 PM is the Arts Festival at Oldbridge High School. That'll kick off in the gymnasium. And then, May 4th will be the Septa Field Day for any of our special needs families. It's a great day to get out there and partake in activities on Lombardi Field, and that'll take place from 1:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, May the 4th. And never too early, June 21st is the Relay for Life in Oldbridge. That'll take place at Lombardi Field at 6:00 PM. Any questions about those items? Next, we're going to move into progress towards goals, and I will invite to the podium Ms. Anahida Keeler, and she's going to give us progress towards our Mandarin program in their 5th grade. While she's setting up, anyone who wanted to leave before but couldn't during recognition, you're welcome to do so, or you can stay behind. Thank you.
Jia yu wei yun hui, da jia hao, wo jia de mera, wo jin yan shi chichuo, shi lao chaogong zhong, si niang ji xue sheng, yi si dao ye, dou zhong yong jing, zao wei yi zhe gao jing, xin si na chang, wo kei shi, shui qi pu tang hua. Hen dao ren wen wo, ne tian qin zi tian zao qiao, zhi li sheng go, tian wo li ju zai, wei men chen wo, yo shi pu tang huo, wo sha shui qi tian, shi yan wen shi, wu yi ren zhang, pu tang hua, shi jiang yin yu, ren shu su bei, you you gao shou lou, wo na da shi, da shi, zi kuai le, si da sao shao. Zai duan duan, jin yan nei, dong wo zhuan bei, taosheng gong zuo, wo bu jin si tong, wo tang shi bi, ye da ji wei, lao chaogong zu tang shui jing zhen, wo hai tang shi yu, shi jie shi zhong, zhong sui ren, wo men mei tian, zao chenqing li, xiao shi, ta shi, zao hao, hao jing da gu shou, kei shi, de chaodao ling di lan, shi lang yi niang ji, kei shi zhe shui yin, you de jing zhong huang ban. Jie shi hai, zai zhong duo huo tong, zhe zi ge, zhong san yan, yin de shi shi, cheng wei sheng yi, ji sheng ju, wo bu nian, zhong dong shi zhe liu wo, wo bi shi zhe shi sheng, zi wo chen da shi jie. Wo ji dao, xiao xi zhong wen hua, bao wu chong wei yi ji ge, geng hua de hui shen, duan liang wo de dang you, bing ren wo li liang gong zhi shi zhe, wo yi jing zhuan bei hao jing zhao zhen. Dong wo zhuo yu, zhe de lao rider, dao shi xu, wo de shuang ji shi, shui shi pu tang hua. Jin hua ru gao ren di wa, wo de zhong wen ni, long li liang, xiao sheng ke, yin xia ren shou chuan zhong, chong ji nan ji, kaoshi, shui zhong wen shi sheng, you yan mo, wo men zo bu da, da na, zhan shi niang shi, zhan he ge, wo sha de hui, xie xie.
Thank you, De Mera, and I apologize. For some reason, the very last slide was supposed to say, if you were impressed with what De Mera can do with just four years of Mandarin, imagine what she could have done if she had learned it in the first grade. And I truly appreciate it, De Mera, despite your fractured leg, ankle, which just happened over the weekend, and all the other stressors of applying to Rider, being accepted into the community house that she just found out she was accepted into. Thank you. She made it a point to come out here and share her beautiful talents with us. Let's hear it for De Mera once again, please. Yes, in just a minute. I was trying to make the point that De Mera has been studying Chinese for only four years with a variety of teachers who have come and left our high school, and this year, thanks to the board's foresight, we were able to implement a 5th grade Chinese program that has impacted over 700-plus students district-wide. The funding came to us through an application that I applied for from College Board and the Hanban Agency in China, and our students were able to learn Mandarin Chinese starting in the 5th grade. They learned a bit of culture, they learned a bit of language, and I would like to share a short video with you. Thank you to Ms. Walsh, Mr. Kudjuski, and his fantastic students who were able to go down and videotape a little something for us and share this with you. I just wanted to let you know that the reason Chinese is so important, and just as music is, it's a language that engages an alternate part of the brain than the regular traditional Western languages. And by doing so, it expands those thought processes that we can then use to improve overall learning. More importantly, as I had mentioned, in our World Language Honor Society last Thursday, employers are not just looking for people to speak in a different language, they're truly looking for people to embrace different cultures, and that is what Mr. Lee has done for our 12 elementary schools. And I'm hoping you get a little bit of a taste of that through this video. So, again, I appreciate it. And as a final thought, we have been, Oldbridge has been selected as the first, one of the first schools to have been selected to participate in the same guest teacher trainee program again next year. And as I am currently working out the logistics of housing and transportation once again, I'm very pleased and happy to say that the College Board is once again offering us a guest teacher trainee for absolutely free to come and teach once again to all our 5th graders. I find this to be a phenomenal resource and a phenomenal program that we must continue in our school district. So, once again, I thank you.
Every day, different school. My class is half an hour. So far, we have learned introduced the fowl, and I'm American, I'm Chinese, and the numbers, and colors, and something about Chinese New Year. I not only teach the kids the Chinese language, but also I teach something about Chinese culture, buy some video and do something. I'm a paper cutter, Chinese paper cutter. I learned paper cutting from my grandma since I was six years old, so I also teach the kids do some paper cutting artwork. In future, maybe the next topic is family. Yeah, maybe I'll teach other kids, the family members, and my family project is they're going to make a family book. Yeah, the kids are very nice. The kids enjoy it. You know, teaching here and teaching China is different. Here, I think the big difference is usually makes class very funny, yeah, and make more communication with the kids, but in China, it's different. In China, sometimes just the teacher speaks, 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 and the kids just listen, listen, and no talking. That's big difference. You know, I think here is better. I like the teaching here, because kids have questions, and they need to know something, they can ask the teacher, and this is a very good way of communication, but in China, maybe they lack of this. I think, so, not just for American kids, you know, in China, the young kids in elementary schools, they learn English, and learn something about English culture. I think that's very important to everyone, to learn something, learn another language, and learn some different culture, yeah.
Well, the children have really loved having Mr. Lee come in. He comes in every week, and he always does fun, hands-on activities for them to do, which they really thoroughly enjoy. I think that they enjoy it because the Chinese language is a little bit more challenging. They not only have to learn how to speak the language, how to understand it, but they're also learning the symbols, and they're doing a great job, so it's been a very positive experience.
The children absolutely love it. They took to it, I was surprised that they took to it right away, and that they have such good accents, and that they love Mr. Lee. I think that it is a very good introduction to a different culture and a very difficult language, and that it can help them in the future, and that if it could be continued, it would be a real plus for them.
No correspondence.
Okay, moving on, Special Committee reports. I guess we'll start, Mr. Porcelli, anything?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. Dunn?
No.
Mrs. Hartman?
No, nothing at this time.
Okay, I had, real quick, I did have a Food Service Athletic Complex Events meeting on March 26th. The main thing, there was representatives there from the PTSA, the High School PTSA, PTA Presidents' Council, and the community. The main thing that was, I think, taken away from the meeting was PTSA has to have a little better commun, no, well, the PTSA needs a better communication to them regarding schedules and spring sports. Is home field Lombardi or Geik? It's all things that are relaying to the operation of the concession stand, I guess. They are being worked on, and that's pretty much... They are being worked on, and that's pretty much really it on that. I did attend the curriculum and technology meeting in place of Mrs. Adriani. One thing that was very impressive, I don't know if anybody knows what the Garage Band is. It's an app on the iPad where our music students are writing their own songs, and I thought it was just amazing. We saw a demonstration of robots. Apparently robotics is another big thing in this school that is taking place, and that also was very impressive. And that's pretty much it on my end. Going down, Mrs. Sulakowski?
Yes, I was at the same meeting with you, and we discussed curriculum and the vet, and I'll go over it a little bit. Okay, that was the first meeting that was videotaped officially by the board, or Mr. Mauer or our Board Secretary set it up. We have a video camera in the chamber right now, and I have a copy of it. And the whole setup is that little by little, all these meetings would be videotaped, and a copy would be distributed to all the board members and the administration, and hopefully a copy at the public library sort of public convenies to see what's really going on. Because not everybody could attend all these meetings. So I do have the master copy here, and I will ask our TV studio to make copies up for all these people on the board. They're very, very cheap. I guess blanks cost only 75 or 80 cents. Also, we discussed robotics, robotic STEM education, which took most of the meeting. And right now, we currently have robotics pilot program at the senior level and a fourth marking period in the astronomy section. And we had a youngster, his name was, I have it written down over here. Okay, Peter Fettis. He came in, I want to thank him again. On TV, he came in and demonstrated on the projects that he worked. What he did is he came in with three different kits. We have about four or five different kits at the science classes. You know, robotics basically is a cross between technology and the industrial arts or engineering. The teacher that came in with him, he also came up with a proposal that he would like to see a program established at the high school level within the next couple of years from freshmen through seniors. You know, after all, if you go out to industry today and look at the way things are made, people very rarely do anything by hand anymore. If you have a car built, you know, a robot puts the hubcaps on, he puts the whole car together. We basically sit there and control the computer to do all these things. As time goes on, we're going to get more and more into this area, and I feel that we should slightly change our educational structure to compete or go along with what's going on in the real world, especially in technology and the communication of the industry itself. Lego is willing to come in and train our staff with these particular programs. Right now, we also have at the kindergarten level and at the elementary level, where kids are actually working with Legos, building blocks and building things. And it gives them an insight of how things are put together. So we have to start at the bottom level and work up. Like I said before, I'd like to see education change a little bit, go into more into technology and engineering because this is where the rest of the world is going. We also spoke about book study program. This is a program that we are working in conjunction with the public library. And what happens is we run it four days a week where we have volunteers from grade six through 12. They go into the library, I believe I have the dates written down over here. Tuesday from 7 to 8, Wednesday from 4:30 to 5:30, Friday from 3:30 to 4:30, and on Saturday from 10 to 11. And what we do is youngsters from the elementary school that would like a little help in reading, these people are these kids from the upper level, we'll help these kids and give them a better foundation to work with. We also had Science Night at the high school. We had 16 volunteer teachers, and it worked out very well. We had a larger attendance from the high school. Next year, I think Dr. Argalia would like to expand to invite the elementary school students and possibly bring in some technology projects. We also discussed, I have all this written down, can't remember it all. Okay, elementary and secondary school counseling grant for 2014. We received a grant for $1.2 million that would be dispersed over a three-year period to help our guidance counselors at the elementary level. We also discussed the PARC testing, which we already, I believe, completed. I believe the state is giving us several weeks to do this, and it was a pilot program. We're not, they're not going to count the test, but they're going to see how it goes. Possibly our director of, not our director, but our superintendent in charge of curriculum can explain a little about this because she knows more about it than I do. The PARC. All yours.
PARC. You want me to talk about PARC?
Yes, yes.
Okay. PARC is a new testing program that is being implemented next year. Olbridge was very fortunate to be able to participate in the field testing a week or so ago, and it went well. And it was very fortunate that we had this opportunity because we got to experience firsthand how it operates, what some of the glitches are, and how best we can move forward with this in preparing our students for the testing as we, as it becomes the way to assess our students next year. I just want to clarify one point. Mr. Sulakowski, we applied for that $1.2 million grant. We have not been awarded that grant. The deadline was yesterday that we submitted the grant, and it was verified that they received our application.
I apologize for my, I guess, miswording it. Accepted. Okay, no problem. Thank you. Also, we had a dance placement courses, discussed number of enrolled students taking standardized testing. Other districts pay for their students to take the AP test, and according to what I read over here, the district is paying very little. Our enrollment numbers in our AP classes are high and always increase with leads each year. I want to thank everybody for listening to me, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sulakowski. Mrs. Mongan, anything?
Well, the Negotiations Committee has had two meetings and will be having a third meeting in May with the Olbridge Administrators Association to negotiate a successor agreement to their contract, which expires in June.
Thank you. Mr. Singh?
I don't have anything at this time.
And Mr. Weber? Okay, excuse me. Roman numeral number 14, facilities use. Move the Board acknowledges schedule of facilities usage request. And on to hearing of the residents, agenda items only.
Hi, I'm Riley Liebowitz, former teacher for 46 years in Olbridge. I noticed on the list of teachers who are out for health reasons and have been granted or will be granted leaves, I just want to say one thing about Helen Kenny. She is a teacher at McDivitt School. I have never been on a committee that she wasn't on, and I know she was on many more committees than I could be. She was a mover and a shaker. She has the pulse of this township down cold, and she has given so much to McDivitt and to other schools that she's been in. Please keep her in your prayers and in your thoughts and hope that she can come back and resume her job at McDivitt School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Liebowitz. Anybody else here, agenda items only? No? Okay, we'll close that portion. Onto policy, nothing there. Excuse me.
Yes, policy, there's nothing there, but I will have a policy meeting. I got an alert from Mr. Mauer's secretary that a lot of the policies have to be redone, either revised or mandated by this board, and I will be calling a meeting as soon as I can find out what dates are available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sulakowski. I have a motion to move athletics, please. Items one to two.
Mongan will move it.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mr. Mauer, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Okay, curriculum. Items one to 11. Can I have a motion to move, please?
Dunn will make a motion, items one through 11.
Second?
Okay, I would like to separate number three for a discussion, please.
Okay, any other separations? Okay.
And separation, discussion and separation for voting purposes.
What goes first? Do we vote on the others first, or? Okay, is there any discussion on numbers one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11? Can I have a roll call on those, please?
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass for one, two, and four through 11.
Okay, Mr. Sulakowski, discussion on number three?
Okay. Okay, being the Chair of the Curriculum Committee, I was involved with curriculum getting to understand a little more each day of what's being taught in our school system. I'm very familiar with the high school programs because I spent 36 years working with them. The elementary, I picked up quite well because I had one of my grandchildren go through the system, and I got involved with that, and I, I'm sort of, we have an excellent elementary school system over here. I think we're doing a phenomenal job. I give the teachers a lot of credit, the administrators. Our kids are doing very well. We're putting a great foundation together for these kids to survive later on in life. Getting to the middle school. As far as I'm concerned, possibly next year, the curriculum meeting, all these things that we're voting on tonight would be discussed in segments little by little, and the superintendent in charge of curriculum would say we're going to be placing these items on the agenda. And what are your recommendations? That didn't happen this year. So what I would like to do is at the middle school level, I would like to see more basic skill programs for these kids that are struggling going through the system. English as a second language, I mean, parents are calling me up and saying that their children are having difficulties composing paragraphs and writing. English, language arts, I would like to see more input into that area. Mathematics, a must. I mean, the state is going to come down on us, and they're going to say, hey, we have to get more time into mathematics classes. They're in there right now for 42 or 43 minutes. And the sciences. After all, the entire universe revolves around these areas that I just spoke. I would like to separate the middle school curriculum, have a meeting with Ms. Kibler and the committee before I vote on this because I can't vote on it the way it sits right now. There are too many dark areas in this particular middle school curriculum. I won't vote on it. So I'd like to separate this entire section until the next meeting, discuss it with Ms. Kibler, the curriculum committee, make a copy of the video, give it to the rest of the board members before I vote on this. Again, I would like to see more mathematics at the middle school level. Thank you. In other words, I want to table this.
Okay, can I have a motion to table number three? If no motion is made, it's not tabled.
Can I make the motion? You can make the motion. I make the motion to table it.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
It's not the entire curriculum for the school system. That's only the middle school portion where I can discuss this with the curriculum committee properly because as far as I'm, like I said, I'm concerned, there's a lot of gray areas in here that were not discussed. After all, the children of Olbridge, they're at stake over here.
So Sulakowski made a motion to separate the table, I'm sorry. Is there a second? Having no second?
Motion fails.
Okay, the motion fails, so now we vote on number three. Mr. Mauer?
Hartman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Sulakowski?
Definitely not.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Item number three passes.
Thank you. Moving on to finance, items one through, sorry, one through 15. Do I have a motion to move finance?
Mongan will move.
Mrs. Mongan, second?
Singh will second.
Singh, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to have a little discussion, just on one of the bill list items.
I'm sorry?
I just want to bring the attention to one item. It's on page, it's the second bill list, so it's page two of 16. That's in there. All-phase general contractors, $4,818 for baseball field fence. My only question, and I had asked a number of questions to administration, they had answered most of them, but my concern is that this had not been discussed with the board prior to it. This, from my understanding, what this is, is that we needed to put a fence around the on-deck circle. My understanding is that it was a floor in the design and that the on-deck circle was put on the outside of the dugout fence. By law, you cannot have in any youth organization children outside that fence while a batter is up. So my understanding is that there is options, right? The first option is probably what we've been doing, and I'm not certain what we've been doing, but assuming is that we don't have batters on deck. They wait in the dugout for their turn at bat, right? And then they get up and bat, okay? This is a brand-new field. We spent a significant amount of money on it. Whether you love it or you disagree with it, it's a beautiful complex, and I think we should be proud of what we have. But I think that we should stop there. To me, this is an upgrade to the facility. I think at this point, we continue on the way that we've been continuing on. I sit through many committee meetings, such as curriculum, and teachers, supervisors, administrators, they come to us with requests, sometimes for textbooks, because our textbooks are out of date. And we question it, and we scrutinize it, and we prioritize. But yet, when we're looking to make an upgrade to a brand-new baseball facility, we're not, we don't question it. So my concern is why wasn't the board approached that this was going to take place and that we were going to invest more money into this field when I think that we should be investing in textbooks?
Can anybody answer, Mr. Basili?
I would recommend that if the board, in consultation with Mr. Harton, wants to go after the designer of the field, that would be the way to go to recoup these fees, to sit back and say, let's keep on doing what we're going to have. If we find that it's a safety issue, I assure you the bill for any litigation for a child getting hurt was something that we identify as a safety issue would be much more than $4,000 for run a fence.
Well, I understand the argument, I'm sorry, I understand the argument of the safety issue. But the safety issue is only when a coach is careless and allows a batter to go outside of that fence, which could also happen with an on-deck circle, okay? Just because it's fenced in area, the batter can take the bat and say he's going to warm up behind the batter's box, okay? So what the rules would state is that that player does not leave the dugout until it's his turn to bat. You know, we've spoken at, you know, earlier on in the year about setting goals where we want to make sure that every decision that we make benefits every child in this district. But, you know, this is benefiting less than 1% of our students. It's not benefiting our softball players or our soccer players or our lacrosse players.
Goal number five. Goal number five is student safety.
I have a question for Mr. Mauer. Is this, this fence has been installed? All right, so at this point, the contractor wasn't part of any of that discrepancy, so I would vote to approve it. However, I would strongly encourage us to recover the money.
I have a question. The field has been in operation over a year. This safety concern just arose. I mean, the designs had to be approved. They were approved and the field was built while I was the business administrator. And why wasn't this concern addressed before the turf was put down and while it was in the design phase? I mean, I'm sure before anything, work was done, the district signed off on the plan. So, you know, that's... so, you know, that's my question. And if it is a safety, if four thousand dollars pays for a little more safety, then I have no problem with it. It's not a major renovation, but I just don't understand why it's coming up now, so much later, when they had a whole season of baseball, and it didn't come up last year.
Can I just make one more comment, I'm sorry, to your comment, Mr. Sidedino, goal number five is safety, I completely agree with that, okay? We've been playing on this field with it the way that it is, and I assume that we've been taking safety into consideration and ensuring that those players do not leave the dugout. So I believe one of the options would be to remove the on-deck circle and just have a field with no on-deck circle. You understand what I'm saying? So then you don't have that option of that student walking out there and walking into a, an area that is not safe. So it's not so much where I'm arguing whether or not this should have been done, I'm more concerned with why wasn't this brought to the board's attention before we made the decision to move forward, when I believe that there were other options.
Okay. Part of the reason is that this was brought to our attention, again, not an excuse, my first year as superintendent, I wasn't in the ability to sign off on anything for that field when that field was built. So it wasn't in my position to approve or not approve that field. I couldn't tell you, I don't think there's a person at the dais who was in position to approve that field. It was brought to our attention by the director of athletics and by the baseball coach, and it was brought to his attention by other baseball coaches who checked with NJSIA, there has to be an on-deck circle for high school baseball. You can't have students not warm up and get ready to swing, and just go out, ask them to go out and swing at a pitch that they haven't been, have the opportunity to warm up for. And you're not going to delay a game and give us someone three minutes to take some practice swings before going up to the, to hit the ball, just the way it is, that's in the regulations. So I could have ignored the situation and said, "Let's hope for the best," and go and litigate this and hope that I can get the contractor to come back and put in a four thousand dollar piece of fence, or we pay for the four thousand dollar piece of fence to ensure the safety of our students, and not only our students, but any students who, anyone who uses the field, and then go after the four thousand dollars.
I checked the NJSIA rules, and it states that a batter can be in a on-deck circle if it is a secured fenced-in area, or that they can wait inside the dugout. That's as far as it states. So it does not state that there, to me, the way I read it, does not state that there needs to be an on-deck circle, but there has to be an area where the player can wait for his turn at bat. Now, if it's inside the dugout, the issue is there, they cannot pick up a bat.
Correct, that's the same information I have. There has to be a place for this player to warm up, and it has to be in a secure area. Mr. Vice President, I think what we should do, since it's already been installed, it's a designed floor of the field. If it's required by law, then we have to go back to the engineer of record and say, "Hey, you know what, this was a deficiency within your plans, you gave us defective plans, now we want recourse. We want reimbursement for this, because it should have been initially developed, part of the grand scheme, or the grand plan, and it wasn't done." So I think we have some recourse as a Board of Education to go to our engineer of record and say, "Hey, look, this is a floor that was designed into the facility that you were hired to do, now we want some sort of, you know, some sort of reimbursement, or we take it from other fees that he has going on right now in the district." So we do have recourse, I believe the fence has been installed already, safety is paramount, and at this point, I think we go after the engineer of record and say, "Hey, look, this is something you should have been aware of. There have been other issues with the field, which he's been aware of as well, which we've been working with him." So at this point, I think we have no other recourse but to take from him and get an explanation.
I agree with Mr. Dunn. I'm going to just ask counsel, if we proceed with that and then follow up? Is that how?
Exactly.
So we will still go with the vote?
Yes.
And then follow up and see if there's any recourse for us in recapturing the funds?
We'll pursue it with the contractor afterwards.
Is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with that, again. It's done, and what's done is done, okay? My argument is that if we're going to be making any upgrades, and I see this as an upgrade to the facility, right, I believe that there were other options, and I think that that should have been discussed with the board beforehand.
I fully agree with you.
I believe that there's other ways that we could have spent that money.
I fully agree with that part, but I, my personal opinion is, it wasn't an upgrade to beautify the field or anything like that, it was an upgrade to ensure the safety of our student athletes.
I still, can I ask one question, Mr. Sidedino? What have we been doing for the past year that we've been playing ball, as far as an on-deck circle? So have we been playing with, outside of the rules?
I'd have to check, I can't tell you that.
Okay.
I have attended some baseball games, but I have not watched to see where they stood for all those baseball games.
Okay, because again, the way I read the rules is, we don't need to have an on-deck circle, we just need to have a spot where the students can stand and wait for their turn at bat.
I would just like to add, I as a board member do not, would not authorize or approve or vote on any additional expenditure of legal fees in order to go after a contractor when the field has been in use over a year. If this was a problem, the director of athletics or whoever signed off on the field the way it was designed should have brought it up at that time. The way I understand it, there were dimensions, there were drainage issues, there were all kind of issues in place that necessitated the building of that field the way it is. And I can't believe that, at this point, eighteen months later or whatever, we're just finding out that there's no room to put an on-deck circle. It just does not make sense. And I don't see having to spend legal fees to recoup forty-eight hundred dollars. I think that we should first do an internal investigation and find out why we are finding out about this now.
Mr. Vice President?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I understand Ms. Mangan's point, however, we've had other issues with the engineer of record with this project, so I think that there has been, you know, some negligence on their part, and we need to just look into it to see if we have recourse. This is not the only issue that has occurred, there's others, and I know that Ms. Mangan is not aware of those other issues, but that's something which we can discuss further. I would like to add, though, that, I don't remember the date of it, but there was the athletic meeting last year where these items were brought up, and they were brought up by an outside person, Mr. Babcock from the Department of Recreation. He gave a punch list of things that, in his assessment, were wrong with the field, including warning track, the layout of, the color of the warning track, and the on-deck circle. And that's when it was brought up and brought to our attention. I went out there with Mr. Babcock, I went out there with Mr. Erickson, Mr. Mara, and at one time, the contractor when we had the other problem with the drainage. And these things were identified, and before the baseball season started, my number-one priority, Mr. Mara's number-one priority, was to ensure the safety of the students, and that's what we did.
Okay, so I guess we're going to check.
I think Mr. Singh.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mara.
I agree with Mr. Dunn, but I think if it's a safety issue, regardless of all the logic that we have, which is valid, we should go this, go ahead and do this first, then we can go after wherever we want to go. This should be done.
I would ask, as a matter of practicality, Mrs. Mangan made a strong point, we don't want this to be a period victory, that we spend more in legal fees than recovery. However, I would be comfortable spending three or four thousand dollars just to, if the message is appropriate for the contractor, to deliver that message, but if it's not, I would, you know, I would put an assessment of it in counsel's hands and give us an idea what, what they think the expense in pursuing this is a legal.
Right.
Cost would be, and then let the board or the board or administration decide whether we're going to pursue it.
Absolutely. As Mr. Dunn said, there are other issues with this particular engineer, and we can fold this into the resolution of those, so there wouldn't be any excess expenditures just to address this issue isolated.
Okay, so we're going to vote on it, but it will be part of, for lack of a better term, the package of issues with the, okay. Okay, I believe Mrs. Mangan made the motion, Mr. Singh seconded, so roll call, Mr. Mara.
Mangan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Porcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Motion's pass. Motion's pass.
Okay, non-certificated personnel office, items one to, one and two. Can I have a motion? Mr. Weber, second?
Single second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mara.
Singh. Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Porcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mangan.
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Okay, non-certificated personnel operational, one item. Can I have a motion, please?
Mangan will move.
Second?
Dunn will second, non-certificated personnel operational.
Any discussion? Mr. Mara?
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Porcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mangan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, non-certificated personnel other, items one through thirteen. Can I have a motion to move, please?
Mangan will move.
Second?
Single second.
Any discussion?
Congratulations to retiree Barbara Newman.
Okay, congratulations, Mrs. Newman. Okay, Mr. Mara?
Mr. Newman, why don't you stand up and get that a recognition?
Weber.
Yes.
Porcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mangan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Okay, certificated personnel, items one through twenty-eight. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will make a motion, certificated personnel, items one through twenty-eight.
And a second?
So moved.
Separating number one for discussion.
Separate number one for discussion. Any other separations? Okay, so numbers two through twenty-eight, Mr. Mara?
Porcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mangan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Motion's two through twenty-eight, pass.
Mr. Solakowski, you wanted to discuss number one.
Yes, I worked with two of these teachers, well, one is basically a special ed education teacher, I worked with Claudia Pace and Gail Moskowitz for many, many years. I wish these two people a lot of luck. Not that I don't wish the other two retired a lot of luck, I wish them also, but these two I know personally, and I'm sure that will do very well. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the administration to read the names of the four people and years of service.
On the agenda for retirement, we have Gail Markowitz, she's Obergeiss High School, culinary arts, eighteen years of service. Noreen Kurtz, she was employed as a kindergarten teacher at Southwood School for twenty-three years of service. Svetlana Bogalami, she's at Glenn School and the Grade Nine Center as a child psychologist, twenty-seven years of service. And Claudia Pace, Carl Sandberg Middle School, formerly at the high school, special education, thirty years of service.
Congratulations to the retirees, and thank you for all your service. Any other discussion?
Nearly a hundred years of service retiring here, ninety-eight years, I believe.
Okay, so Mr. Mara, we're voting on number one now.
Porcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes, congratulations.
Hopman.
Yes, and thank you for all your dedication for all the years.
Mangan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
With congratulations and envy.
Motion number one passes.
Okay, moving on to non-certificated personnel transportation, item number one, can I have a motion, please?
Mangan will move.
And a second?
Single second.
Any discussion? Mr. Mara?
De Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mangan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Porcelli.
Yes.
Motion one passes.
Okay, number twenty-five, supplies, equipment, and services, items one through sixteen. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will make a motion, supplies, equipment, and services, items one through sixteen.
And a second? Anybody?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Separation, please.
Okay.
Eleven and sixteen.
Eleven and sixteen will be separated.
For voting and discussion.
Okay, so we have, Mr. Mara, items one through ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Dunn.
Yes.
Hopman.
Yes.
Mangan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Porcelli.
Yes.
De Prima.
Yes.
So motions one through ten, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, pass.
Okay, Mrs. Mangan, you wanted to discuss?
Yes, thank you. Number eleven, they're not numbered or lettered, but I would vote for all of the cooperatives with the exception of Hynella. For reasons stated at the last meeting, I do not feel that they would be a proper representative as lead agency of our district, in that the representative that addressed the board at the meeting could not remember that he had signed the audit that showed the district, the non-operating school district, operated in a deficit. To me, that's a matter of trust, and I don't, I don't want my name associated with approving this joint purchasing system. The other cooperative that I'll just mention, the EIRC, they did receive their purchasing, cooperative purchasing license from the state of New Jersey in January of two thousand fourteen, and for that reason, I would not separate them, but I would, I am not going to be voting on Hynella for those reasons. Number sixteen, I did question the, when the agenda came home, I did question the superintendent and the business administrator on this item. My concern is that why wasn't air conditioning for the six classrooms at Southwood School included in the original proposal to provide full-day kindergarten? It was stated last September that, to accommodate the full-day kindergarten, that the preschool disabled children would be moved to Southwood School, and I did question the fact that the area is not air-conditioned. And I was told at that point, at that public meeting, that, well, Glenn School is in air-conditioned, it's not needed, but here it is, it is needed, these children do have But here it is, it is needed, these children do have special needs, and I don't understand why the architect or the administrators didn't recommend that this be included in the initial bid. And I also asked if there were any other costs associated with providing air conditioning for these students. And, um, Mr. Mara advised there would be an additional thirty thousand dollars. I don't know if this, if this is the last item that will be added, or if there are other items down the road, but I just feel that I, I will approve it, but I feel that it should have been included in the original cost and projections for what it would take to put full-day kindergarten in to the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mongan. I'm gonna ask the council how to proceed with them.
I just have a question and procedure. Uh, on item number eleven, um, although I know it's not identified by number or, or letter, can we just remove, uh, the Hynella as a separation and vote on it separately? I mean, it shouldn't be any reason why we can't do it that way.
I'll refer to council for that, as I'm sitting in for the president, I don't know. So we're taking out Hynella?
No, we're, we're gonna vote separately on eleven minus Hynella and then Hynella.
Okay. Mr. Mara, you got that?
Yep.
Okay, so we're voting on number eleven.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Dunne.
Question. At a previous board meeting, we approved Hynella as one of our cooperatives.
That's what I thought.
And now we're disapproving them and having them annexed out?
I did not approve them for when they were on the last, uh, the last time, and I'm not approving them for fourteen, fifteen. That's what this motion is for.
Mr. Mara, can you confirm that? Cause I, I remember like Mr. Dunn does, actually. Is there any way of you confirming if that?
Yeah, we, we, uh, Hynella was approved, I believe, in February, uh, as a shared services participant and also as a joint co-op purchasing group that we would join. And we had lengthy discussions and they were approved.
And this says renew, so this would be for the, for the next school year?
No, typically, what these, uh, as, as a matter of routine, we put these on the agenda each year, uh, just to renew them. But the shared services agreement that we have with them, that's in effect, is a ten-year shared services agreement. The joint purchasing will usually renew each one each year.
I, I don't know, I'm a little confused too then. I, I do recall us approving it, but that was very recent, so why?
Yeah, they were appro, well, they were approved for this year, to use them this year. Now we're approving them to use them for fourteen, fifteen, as a joint purchaser.
As of July one?
As of July one, yes.
Okay, I understand.
Or not renew them, as the board may vote.
So do we still separate that part?
Yes, so.
For Ms. Mongan.
All right, so.
Do you mind if I?
No, please.
All right, so for number eleven, um, the vote, uh, the motion on the floor is for cooperative pricing system Mercer, Middlesex County sixty-one, Middlesex County, Middlesex Regional Education Services Commission, Hunterdon County Educational Services Commission, and EIRC.
Mr. Mara, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Motion eleven minus Hynella passes.
So now it's eleven?
Hynella.
Including Hyn, just Hynella?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Mara, Hynella?
Dunn?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
No.
Singh?
No.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Uh, motion eleven with, uh, uh, just Hyn, uh, eleven Hynella passes, I'm sorry.
Okay, and number sixteen.
Dunn? Dunn?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Motion sixteen passes.
Okay, transportation, items one and two. Have a motion, please?
Mongan will move.
Dunn will second, transportation.
Thank you, any discussion? Mr. Mara?
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Uh, motions one and two pass.
Okay, miscellaneous, items one through seven, do I have a motion, please?
Mongan will move.
And a second?
Single second.
I think that was first, correct? Any discussion? Mr. Mara?
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Motions one through seven, pass.
Board secretary and board business, items one through nineteen, can I have a motion, please, to move? Weber move. Second?
Single second.
Discussion?
Separation.
Separation?
Number sixteen.
Number sixteen, we separated. Any other separations or discussion? Okay, uh, Mr. Mara, items one through fifteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, please?
Singh?
Numbers one through fifteen?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Motions one through fifteen, seventeen, and eighteen, pass.
Okay, Mrs. Mongan?
I, I'm separating that for voting purposes.
Okay, so any discussion?
I feel that I've re, I've, I've asked for a copy of the contract, I have reviewed it. I have also stated my concern that for the first major project of this firm, that the air conditioning was not included in the original plan, and for that reason, I would not agree with renewing them for the entire year. The motion were amended for a project-by-project basis, but we are a large district, it is a small firm. The agreement also calls for, um, the use of consultants at a one-point-two percent, I mean, um, a twenty percent over, overcharge of any of the costs that would be incurred, and because they are a smaller firm, they would have to bring in consultants more often than a larger firm, and to me, that is money that we have saved in prior years, that I would not want to, uh, and debt the district to next year.
Um, council, do we vote on that, or am I put, oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Mara, vote on the sixteen?
Singh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
No.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Hopman?
Yes.
Mongan?
No.
Motion sixteen passes.
Okay, um, hearing of the residents on any school district issue? Anybody? Okay, um, old business colleagues? Nobody? New business?
Uh, I have one quick new business, um, I, I don't know if everybody's aware, but the Oldbridge Town Council has challenged the Oldbridge Board of Education to a charity softball game. Any money we hopefully raise will be, um, allocated to the Relay for Life. Relay for Life will be there at the game with a table, trying to, uh, sign up new teams, or whatever they wanna do, they're welcome to. The game is tentatively scheduled for June seventh at ten a.m. at either Lombardi Field Baseball Field or Geik Park, depending upon the availability of our field and depending on how far our baseball team goes, which looks like they're having a fantastic year this year, so they might be, uh, using the field and they will take preference over us. But if you have nothing to do that Saturday morning, come out and, uh, I guess have a few laughs, uh, it's all for a good cause, so, uh, that's it on that, anybody else in business?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that, um, I had the opportunity of going to, um, over to see the Beauty and the Beast, and I have to say that it was absolutely phenomenal. The kids were wonderful. Uh, Mr. Maranzoli, I, I thank you for everything that you do over there at that school, because it certainly showed with all of your teachers who were involved with putting that whole program together. It was just such a wonderful experience to watch them, they were, they were great. And, you know, I, it really, some parts of it took my breath away, that's how good they were. If I didn't know any better, I would have sworn that I was sitting in the middle, middle of Hollywood watching them. They were, they were that good, and, and the teachers that, that helped put that together, um, you know, along with the parents that got those kids to where they are now. Mr. Landigan, you know, I sat with, and it was absolutely phenomenal, and I would just, you know, like you to please thank all of them for me, because it really, it really did bring tears to my eyes to see this whole, the whole setup. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hopman. I guess could have the order, right?
Could have the order.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Holker, Ms. Kibler, anything?
I just have to say that I agree with Ms. Hopman, I was at the play as well, and I had my five-year-old nieces and my two daughters who agreed, they certainly concurred, and they were very impressed that they got to meet, um, Beauty after the show. So I, I congratulate them on a job very well done. It takes a lot of, lot of time and effort to put shows together like that, and I thank the teachers, the staff, and the parents for putting that together. Um, I also just wanna remind everybody that Oldbridge Online is out, and it's very impressive, make sure that you take a look at that, um, and keep up to date with what's going on in our classrooms in Oldbridge, thank you.
I would just like to remind everyone about the, um, presentation of the Music and Arts Festival on Thursday evening at Oldbridge High School Gymnasium. There is incredible student talent in this district, and it is going to be showcased so beautifully, under the direction of, um, Mrs. Kibler and, um, the, Mrs. Ne and Mrs. Thatcher. Um, they've done an incredible job of putting the music portion together, as well as the art department. There'll be representation of artwork from all our schools in the district, so please come out and see the incredible talent that has been nurtured by the staff of Oldbridge, thank you.
Mr. Porcelli?
Yeah, I just wanna, um, echo some of the comments regarding, um, the Sandberg Play, it was amazing. Um, it's, it's, it's just amazing when you go out and you watch the show and you, you're kinda looking at the stage and you forget that you're watching middle schoolers, cause they, they certainly don't look like middle schoolers up there, they're, they're just phenomenal. The play was terrific, um, I actually took my entire family to it, uh, it was a great family play, and, and, um, and I did see a lot of other administrators with their families there as well, and I thought that was, that was quite nice to see, you know, the, the families coming together and, and to see the show, um, so I thought that was, that was great. The Oldbridge High School, uh, play I had seen, I think I had already mentioned this, but that was phenomenal as well, and I know SOC is coming up in a couple of weeks, they're doing hairspray, and that, that should be terrific as well, so try to get out there and see that. The Southwood Arts Festival, I, I thanked them for the invite, um, I know they had a terrific arts festival, uh, and that was a great time. And, uh, you know, as Ms. Kibler said, I encourage everybody to get out to the Music and Arts Festival. The unfortunate thing is Mr. Sididino did mention it's the same time as the, uh, lacrosse game, so I'm going to try to, um, see if I can get a little bit to both, um, so I encourage you to support the lacrosse game as well.
Mr. Dunn?
Good evening, I would like to just remind the public that our budget process comes to an end next week, which is Tuesday, May sixth. This board will be deciding the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget, and we need to, you know, let, the, the public needs to let us know how they feel. We need to hear input, right now, as far as I'm concerned, right here, that there's many board members who may not be voting for the two percent, so I'm asking and appealing to the public to let us know what your thoughts are, because the public are the ones who have to fund the two percent increase. So it's coming to a culmination, it's coming to a head at this point, and next week is do or die. The administration had to take the necessary steps, uh, within the last month or so, to put, uh, on notice employees that they may not be renewed because of the budget issues here in this district, and I am asking the public to please reach out to your elected officials who have the obligation to make decisions on behalf of the educational system here in Oldbridge. Let us know what your thoughts are. As individuals, we do have one vote, there are nine votes up here, so I'm appealing, please, let us know where you stand, we wanna hear from you, because we will be making that decision, and at this point, as far as I know, there are still many board members who haven't made their mind up, so if the budget passes, we move forward, we continue with all the wonderful programs we have. If it fails, there'll be some real deep cuts in, in our system, and that may put us back, uh, to two years ago. So I'm just asking everyone, please think about it, email us, uh, at our, our, our email addresses, let us know what your thoughts are, and hopefully we can make a, 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 a good decision come next week. Secondly, the kindergarten students, they were the, they, they were the blast, they were the show tonight, they're the ones who stole everything, and I think that it's wonderful to see Mr. Tichio and, and everyone who's been participating in the, in, in the kindergarten program, um, that things are going so well, and, and, and it's just splendid, it's just absolutely amazing, and, and, and this Board of Education has given the power and the tools and the resources for a full-day program, and if that's any evidence of what the results are gonna be, that's gonna be fantastic for the school district. So with that said, there's a lot of things going on that's great in this district, and we wanna continue with that, so please come out next week, Tuesday, May sixth, let us know your feelings, and hopefully we'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, for reminding everybody about the budget, uh, budget meeting. Ms. Hopman, anything? Nothing? Okay. Uh, Mr. Solakowski, could have the order?
Uh, yes, I would like to acknowledge the accomplishments of all the students in the recognition portion of the program, and again, I would like to echo, uh, Mr. Porcelli's comments, he's absolutely right, I was at one of the plays, and, uh, good luck to all the retirees again, I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you, Mrs. Mongan?
I would just like to congratulate, um, Mrs. Kibler, Ms. Kibler again, for all her efforts regarding the curriculum in the district and the, um, full-day kindergarten program, congratulations.
I don't expect any cookie, but Ms. Kibler's curious to you. Thank you for doing great, great work.
Uh, Mr. Weber?
Yes, on, uh, Saturday, April sixth, I had the pleasure of, uh, hearing Cloud Nine, who, uh, gave a wonderful performance at the Oldbridge Public Library, their standing-room-only kind of, uh, crowd, and we had some, uh, people outside as well. One of the things I find very interesting about the group, being slightly older than the players, is that, uh, Mr. Simmons has exposed them to a very broad spectrum of music, which they, I don't think normally would have been exposed to, and they're amazingly accomplished at it, and appreciative of it, so it, it was really, you know, a, a young lady singing an Etta James song, I don't know if you know, but she's fabulous, and this young lady was outstanding. Uh, I just have a question for, uh, Mr. Sididino. It was my understanding, because our meeting is being held after April thirtieth on May sixth, that a, a number of those notifications had to go out because of contractual obligations, not that it was purely a, a related issue to the budget passing or not passing, am I correct in that assumption?
Well, it's a little bit of both, you, you, we can't, um, finalize our staffing until we have a financial plan in place, and the financial plan is not in place until the budget is approved, the budget can't, um, and contractually, in Oldbridge, they have a better contract than statute regulates, statute regulates May fifteenth to notify non-tenured staff of their employment for next year. In Oldbridge, it is May first, so because the official public hearing is beyond the contractual deadline of May first, we have, and, we don't have a financial plan in place by that time, so we must, we had to offer, um, uh, non-renewal notices for all of our, uh, non-tenured staff until we have a firm financial plan in place with the budget approved.
But can I ask a question, uh, Mr. Sididino? The budget will be adopted next Tuesday, which I believe is the last day it can be adopted. There were no meetings scheduled since the tentative adoption, so I'm assuming there are no changes, because we haven't met to discuss anything, so why are we waiting until the last day? Why wasn't the public hearing scheduled, say, this week, so that those notices didn't have to go out to staff to get everyone so upset, and I know a lot of people, it's very unnerving when you receive that notice letter.
Uh, the answer to that is that the, we proposed a date for the meeting, uh, and the board reviewed that date, and the review, the board had no problem with that date. So you had the opportunity to object to that date at that point, uh, and you did not, and we thought it was an acceptable date.
Should have been brought out that, because the date was the last day, that these letters would have to go out.
Again, when I met with the staff, I reviewed with them that, and said that in the future, we would hope to move the date prior to the May first deadline.
Because in prior years, the budget has always been adopted at the end of March, this is the first year the calendar has changed to accommodate districts that have November board elections.
That is correct, Ms. Mongan.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to add two quick things.
Please.
Chris Simone, who's not here today, you know, he's the, uh, the class president, and being a class president, you're elected by your peers, and I'm not sure how much they knew about him prior to electing him as class president, but he certainly lived up to that, um, role as a leader in this, in this school. When the information about the, uh, lacrosse game for Stephen Bartlick went out, uh, to get that information out further using social media, uh, Christopher put out a plea to his classmates to retweet his tweet, um, about the information, and he pledged ten cents for every retweet before midnight, that's winding up costing him out of his pocket, two hundred and thirteen dollars and fourteen cents, which is truly amazing, he, um, I know he also works as an intern for an attorney in Madawan, so I'm not sure if that's where he gets his money from, or how he's gonna raise that money, but he pledged that, and then several, um, members from our Oldbridge High School staff and leadership also matched what he had done, so, I'm really proud of this community and how it's coming together, rallying for, uh, a child and a family in need, so congratulations to, um, the entire community and Chris Simone and the Oldbridge High School for selecting such a valuable leader. I did also wanna commend, um, Captain Robert Weiss, he is our liaison for the school safety program that we have here with our SROs and our special, uh, twos that we have in our schools. Many people might not know this, cause Bob Weiss is not the kind of person talks about himself, is that he were retired from thirty-four years in active service in the Marines this Saturday, uh, he invited me as a representative of the Oldbridge School District, I went down to Bowling Air Force Base in Bowling Air Force Base in Washington, DC. It was quite a ceremony, I don't think in my lifetime will I ever get a chance to see a ceremony like that. He, representation from the White House came, from a President's Medal for him, from the CIA, and from his, he also graduated from the FBI Academy in Quantico, Virginia. He really brings a wealth of information and central intelligence to, to Old Bridge, and many people don't know, when there's a national crisis going on in the world, he would go down with his unit and be stationed in the Pentagon. This was up until his retirement. He's a Chief Warren Officer Number Five, and if you know anything about the Marine Corps, there's, right now, there's only 40, out of 240,000 Marines in, in the, in the United States, there's only 40 Chief Warren Officer Number Fives, and the joke was, if you have two in a room, it's like seeing a unicorn, and at the retirement, there was two Chief Warren Officer Number Fives in the room until he retired, so it was a great ceremony and quite accolades for a national hero and a local hero, so great, congratulations to him.
Mrs. Sididino, I have one question. Could you reprise the dollar amount that Chris is responsible?
Christopher Simone raised $213.14, I believe, but, and that's what he raised on his own for 10 cents a pledge.
So who owes him 6 cents?
I'm not sure of the amount, maybe someone only made half a tweet, it didn't go through.
Okay, congratulations to Captain Weiss, as Mr. Sididino said. In closing, it, there's so many good, I've said it so many times before, there's a new excitement in town, so many good things are going on, as echoed by my colleagues tonight, and congratulations to all the award recipient, recognition recipients tonight.